We're going to get started over here. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. I am Councilman Schleifer, Chairman of the Committee. We are going to continue our conversation around 21-0007R, Investigative Hearing Water Billing System. I want to thank everybody for joining us today to discuss this important topic. I see I have the bill sponsor, Councilman Conway on, Councilman Costello, Councilman Burnett. We have Nina Themelis from the Mayor's Office, Nikki Thompson from the Council President's Office, Hillary Rulie from Law. We have our Finance Director, Henry Raymond. We have our DPW Director, Jason Mitchell. And we have Legislative, DPW Legislative Team, Marsha Collins. And so, in order to get started, I will turn it over to, and I see Councilwoman Ramos also just joined us, welcome. We'll turn it over to Councilman Conway for some opening introduction before we turn it over to DPW.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank you for calling the hearing and I want to thank Director Mitchell for arranging his team's attendance today. So, we had our first hearing of the term on this issue back in March. And we talked about some of the problems that were plaguing our water billing system, including open service tickets, broken meters, breakdowns in the adjustment processes for resolving water billing problems. And we also talked about some of the imminent, the imminent implementation deadline for the Water Accountability and Equity Act. Since then, we have a new director with about six months running the Department of Public Works under his belt. We have a new report which outlines the detail of the previous shortcomings of the city-county water billing relationship and new interim staff in some key positions and the beginnings of reforms. But my office, and I suspect many of the offices of my colleagues, still get multiple new water billing issues per week that go unresolved for months. We still see adjustments that do not fully compensate for the absorptive bills being issued. Communication on the status of adjustments in water meter repairs are often lacking. And even when I personally get involved, we still see these things happen. And I wouldn't be surprised if my colleagues are seeing this as well. These aren't just issues falling through the cracks. There remain systemic deficiencies that enable these problems to persist. Reforms are only as important as their results. And I see the council's job here as pushing DPW to show results. I want to see the provisions of the Water Accountability and Equity Act implemented. And I want to see positions critical to DPW's operations and required under that law built. I want to see the communication and collaboration improve between residents and DPW and between CSSD and billing and between CSSD and the meter shop. This is a very basic city service that other cities, towns, counties, and et cetera have had the ability to manage correctly. There's no good reason why we can't do the same. Thank you again, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to hearing from DPW on these matters.
Thank you very much, Chairman Conway. I will turn it over to DPW. Marsha, do you want to take over?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Committee members. I just have a couple of business issues. We have Matt Garbark and Steve Strickland, who need to be elevated to help answer any questions as we get going forward. If we could do that, Richard, that would be terrific.
Because he came up. Okay. Strickland. Then, Mr. Chair, I'm back on, unfortunately. The screen locked for about two minutes right before the start.
No problem. All right, so let's elevate those folks and...
Okay, Stephen Strickland.
That's DPW.
He's now a panelist.
And Latoya Curtis will also, I don't know if she's managed to get through yet or not.
Yes.
Wanted to ask for that help.
She's now a panelist.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilman Torres is on. He's been elevated.
Thank you. All right, Richard, you can move. Well, DPW, you can continue with your presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give the Director a few minutes to make a few comments and then we could get right into some of the key questions that Councilman Conway wanted to be sure we responded to in this hearing.
Did I just go, is it?
Is that okay for us to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
So, perfect. Good afternoon, Chairman Schleifer and members of the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. As you all know, my name is Jason Mitchell with the Department of Public Works. I have brought members of our team today to assist the committee with questions that have been sent to us regarding certain water billing issues, certain systemic water billing issues. And when I came aboard, one of my first stated priorities and priorities of Mayor Scott was to get the water billing issues back on track and to improve our customer service at all the different levels and through all the different mediums of Department of Public Works. And no easy task, as you know, some of these issues date back very long. And we know we have a lot of great work here in front of us. But the members on our team that's on this call or this meeting with us is Matt Garbark, our Deputy Director for DPW, who is working closely with our water billing meter shop team to track all the efforts surrounding these important, important functions and help leading a daily team that we meet every day to support the turnaround efforts around our water billing system. Latoya Curtis, who's our Interim Chief of our Customer Support and Services Division. Ms. Curtis oversees the staff who interacts with the water billing customers on issues such as water billing, you know, through mediums via the phone, through emails, or in our Walk-In Center on the first floor of Able-Woman Building. She is a key participant in this effort to improve our customer-facing experience. Some of the experience that you talked to, as you mentioned in your remarks, Councilmember Conway. And we also have Steve Strickland. He's our Acting Chief of our Meter Shop. Mrs. Strickland oversees the meter shop to include large and small meters throughout the city and the county and has been working diligently to get our staff fully functioning in the field and on expediting work orders and past work orders. We also have Ms. Marsha Collins and Janelle Money from our Office of Legislative Affairs. Our department receives detailed questions from this panel that were asked for us to respond in regard to billing and other related issues. In the interest of this committee time, we will go through our responses to each of the questions and our team will be ready to help clarify or respond to any questions the committee may have after the presentation. Ms. Collins, please read out the questions and help direct any additional questions to the appropriate team member.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. And I'm going to start out by apologizing. I'm in the furthest room from the dog barking area. So, if somebody happens to drive by and you hear some barking, I apologize in advance. But it should be fairly muffled where I am right now. So, I'm going to begin and I thank the Director for making those introductory remarks because I know this has been a very important issue for him and for us. So, I hope that you will see that we've been working hard and making progress on each of these measures. Some of these are going to take time, but we've been working diligently. And I know a number of people are meeting daily to address these concerns so that we can get on a firm footing with our customers. One of the first questions that we received was, what actions has DPW taken to respond to water billing issues in the OIG report? And what plans are in place to resolve pending water billing issues? So, as the Director indicated, we have been meeting daily on a number of these issues. The disputes that arise when people feel they got a water bill that is not to their liking or they feel is correct, that fluctuates, that number fluctuates daily. Some get resolved and others come in. But right now, as of today, we have about 213 of these in process. I do just want to note that we can get calls. People can drop by at the Walk-In Center now. And they can also reach out to the dpw.billing@baltimorecity.gov as well to express their concerns and to begin to get attention to their issues. I also want to point out that we do have, we have resumed our Walk-In Center on the first floor of Able-Woman Building. We have representatives in the office also as well, back from working remotely. We have been holding daily operational meetings to discuss and resolve billing and customer service issues. And the Deputy Director, our Chief Financial Officer, the Chief of Customer Service and Support, Ms. Latoya Curtis, meet weekly to discuss these adjustments and escalations so that the issues are addressed and resolved as quickly as possible. So, that's been an initiative that's been going on for several weeks now. But as to the specific number, as I said, it does fluctuate. And right now, it's about 213 in process. They can be at the beginning, the middle, or at the end waiting for their adjustment. The second question that we got...
Before we go on to that, just a point of clarity. You said there's 213 outstanding water billing issues, is that correct?
Yeah, these are issues that are, you know, somebody will call up and they'll say, you know, the address is wrong. You know, the little issues that can get taken care of right away are fine. But these are the ones that require investigations, exchanges back and forth with the customer, discussions about adjustments, looking at adjustments, offering adjustments, and then applying adjustments. So, they're in process, that's about...
There's only 213 in process? Is that per council district or that's for the city? Because, I mean, I have dozens and dozens of them that are definitely in process that I'm currently involved in, let alone, just ones that go directly to DPW. So, 213 just seems very low.
Well, Ms. Latoya Curtis, if you've been able to be elevated, do you want to speak to that issue?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. So, greetings, everyone. Is the 213 that you're referring to, is that part of the escalations group? I think that's the number that you're referring to.
Yes, yes.
Not anything else that has been in queue?
Correct.
With the rest of the team?
Correct.
Okay, so just to clarify, so that's 213 that our council referred escalations, not citywide pending water billing issues?
Correct. And this is the...
So, what's the citywide number?
I can get that to you shortly. I don't have that in front of me. But the escalations also includes things that come from the Mayor's Office as well as our Director's Office.
Okay. Yeah, if you can get that when you can get that. And I also want to just say, you know, publicly that, you know, I appreciate all the work you've been doing. I know you're in an acting capacity, but you've been very responsive. And so, I can just tell you, as far as I'm concerned, I really appreciate that. And I hope the whole DPW team, the Director and everyone else hears that. And, you know, I don't want to punish you, but maybe you should be in there in a permanent role and resolve the issues because we can certainly use the responsiveness long-term. But Marsha, you can continue on to the next one while Ms. Curtis gets that information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for those kind words about Latoya. She is a very hardworking person. And I really appreciate everything that she and her team do. The second question that we were asked was, has the Water Billing Escalations Unit been appropriately staffed? So, we were just talking about escalations. They are fully staffed. They've been operating throughout COVID. They have, most of the staff was working remotely, but we're now in the process of bringing them back into the offices. This has taken a little bit of time because we need to create larger areas to spread people out and be a COVID compliant. So, that's taken a little time, but they are coming in. And we feel that that will have another beneficial effect to their responsiveness because they can interact directly. Sometimes it's easier to do it in person than remotely. So, they are being brought back into Able-Woman. In addition, the team purchased something called Jitbit, J-I-T-B-I-T, Jitbit Help Desk. And this is a Help Desk ticketing system. And this enables the staff to manage and track incoming support request emails as well as the associated tickets with an issue. And this was brought on board to be able to have a tool in which to make sure that matters are being addressed in a timely fashion, that there's proper accountability and service level agreements that may be required. And just to overall ensure timely response and proper closure of tickets. So, the escalation teams is like the oversight team that assists and encourages and supports the work that the CSSD staff does. And they want to track in a way that's going to be meaningful and can be done on a routine basis. And so, we feel this new Help Desk process will, by creating these tickets and following through, will be one more way in which we can assure that we're keeping track. Latoya, did you want to add anything else about the escalations team at this time?
No, I think you accurately addressed it. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll certainly obviously be here for more questions. The next question we received was, how many water meters are still not functional? And we presumed, maybe incorrectly, but we presumed that this was in reference to a number that was quoted in the OIG's report where they stated there were 22,000 meters that were considered broken or not working. Unfortunately, that number is not a real number. It's a number based on what a commercial standard for water meter producers. In other words, companies that can build these water meters guarantee that 95% of the time their meters will be functioning appropriately. It's just a commercial standard. In actuality, what we did is we went through all 15 monthly billing cycles for the city water bill accounts and looked at every single account that wasn't transmitting a read or that had no information provided. And after going through that entire cycle, we found there were 1,000 or less meters that were not sending a signal. And of course, that signal is the way in which we get that meter reading information. And so, that's about 99.5% read rate. Some of this backlog is due to the ransomware attack and initial months of the COVID-19 pandemic that we're taking time to correct. However, by doing this methodical monthly cycle review, we can keep track of and constantly look at those numbers, diagnose what's going on, and then make sure that there's follow-up on those. I just wanted to say that a malfunctioning meter would be a meter that's either physically damaged or the calibration of the water flow isn't registering properly. And most commonly, we find that the signal issue is the problem. The signal is not able to get to the collectors or there's been an interruption in the signal because of conflict with some other signal that may be going on at the time. Maybe one of the collectors or repeaters that take that information are out of commission. For example, a car hits pole and the pole goes down and so does our, so does our collector. And sometimes the problem is within the meter vault, there's the earth, the little, the little plastic thing that's in the water meter, attached to the water meter, is connected by a wire. And sometimes that can get disconnected or frayed or even physically cut. And then the other problem that we see routinely is an obstructed signal. Somebody decides to put a flower pot on top of the meter vault or there is, I don't know, some kind of, somebody putting dirt on it or they park on top of it or, and that will interrupt the signal. I do want to say that these meters are capable of keeping 30 days' worth of daily and hourly reads. But of course, whenever you resume that signal and get that information, it's current. So, there's a lot of reasons why you could have an interrupted signal. But in summary, we have less than 1,000 right now that we're investigating and following through on. I think some of the confusion was that initial number that appeared in that OIG report and people took that to mean that 22,000 meters were not functioning.
So, what's the other 21,000 issues that the OIG is referring to?
The, as I pointed out at the beginning, the OIG's report said there were 22,000 non-functioning meters. But really, what that number represented was not non-functioning meters. It was an industry standard that says, we guarantee our meters will be accurate 95% of the time. And so, they took that 95% and they came up with a number of 22,000 meters wouldn't be working. But that's, that's an industry standard that has nothing to do with how our meters are performing out in the field. And when we check every city account, every meter, there were less than 1,000 that weren't producing a read. And then, once you get that information, you have to diagnose why not. Was it the repeater? Is there something going wrong? Is it physically damaged? Is there a lot of debris and dirt and it's disconnected? Any of those issues? So, there weren't 22,000 not working. It's just an industry standard figure that the OIGs calculated.
That's interesting. Okay, so, Councilman Conway, you have a question on that?
I just wanted to clarify to make sure I fully understood. You're saying that it's a calculated number, not an actual number?
Yes, yes, sir.
Got it, okay. And you're saying the actual number is 1,000 meters that are not...
A little less than 1,000 when we went through that monthly check. So, the purpose of the monthly check is to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that. Know what we call a no-read, meaning we can't get the information in which to issue a bill. And there are, as I pointed out afterwards, there were several reasons how that can happen. Some, it's rarely because the meter is damaged. It's usually some other issue, either with the sending of the signal or being able to collect the signal or having an obstruction or conflict with that signal.
And how often do we have instances? Is this captured in the thousand or is this in addition to the thousand that the read is incorrect? As in, it's not calibrated correctly in reading either too much or too little?
Well, for example, if I, you mean, when somebody says, I don't think I used that water, I want you to check my meter?
Yes.
Okay, I do not have that number. I don't know how many people do request that. I don't know, Steve, if you would know that, or Latoya?
Ms. Collins, I can jump in here if...
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Yeah, so, that gets into something that's called the exceptions process where if, there are two types of exceptions, a consumption exception and a billing exception. If the consumption exceeds 150% of the last bill, it notes an exception. And then correspondingly, it would note a billing exception because the corresponding bill would go up. That requires a manual review to see what's going on. The majority of the time, those exceptions are generated because of leaks, whether it's an interior leak or an exterior leak. And those exceptions are reviewed. We make sure that the meter is transmitting signals and we make sure that all the other categories of billed amounts are correct before our staff manually releases the bill for printing and then distribution. So, those are always reviewed. We have found that based on some of the programming, initial programming, as well as some of the other transmission issues, a few of them have not been manually stopped. As those come up, we fix that. But again, that goes back to some of the original programming of the, you know, over 400,000 accounts that we have, making sure that it all lines up the same way.
And so, to better understand this and to kind of paint the finer point, how often do we find that the meter is incorrect? I know there are definitely instances in which an owner may have a leak on their side they don't know about. We then go out there, confirm it's not a leak on the city side. They didn't have a plumber come out and realize they had either a running toilet or a broken line somewhere along the line. But in instances where that is not the case, do we know how often that happens and that the meter may actually be faulty?
The meter being faulty, I don't have that exact number. It is exceedingly low.
Okay.
As Ms. Collins said, it is usually a connection error or some sort of transmission error. The meter actually being uncalibrated or actually being destroyed or broken is exceedingly low.
Is it correct that to check that, we do what we call the bench test where we pull the meter and actually test it? Is that what we're referring to?
Correct. And there are times when the age of a meter, the calibration can get off. That certainly does happen. We bench test that, we see it. There is a degree of precision that the flow has to meet in order to pass. There are meters that don't pass and we will take them out. We will send them back to manufacturer. We will check for warranties and try to get credits on that. But those are not, those are very rare compared to some of the programming issues and some of the transmission issues.
Okay.
Was that helpful, Mr. Councilman?
Yeah, that was very helpful. And then, I'm not sure if you plan on getting into this later. If you do, feel free to answer this question later. I'll be sure to come back to it. But what is the timeline on repairs when we do identify a need for repair?
Timeline, I'm sorry.
To repair a meter?
To repair a meter? Well, usually what we, am I correct, Matt or Steve, that we would just replace the meter?
I'll defer to Steve Strickland on his meter shop chief about their timeline and their process.
Good afternoon, everyone. Depending on the size of the meter and to...
Steve, your microphone is low, we're not hearing you.
Get closer to the screen, Steve.
Can you hear it? That's perfect, yep.
Okay, good, sorry, not that setting for loud. To Marsha's point, depending on the size of the meter, would make the decision on what we would do to correct the problem. So, your typical 5/8 meter that, or 3/4 inch meter that supplies a normal residential home, it's just more beneficial to us to replace the meter. It's a quick process. If we know that it is broken upon our arrival there, we can have the same one with us or turn around and have it done within, you know, three to five days, I think is our normal turnaround time in our commitment. But if we have a larger commercial meter, anything above, you know, 3, 4 inches or a fire service meter, something like that, we'll make an attempt to repair that into an overhaul on the meter. It's much more cost-effective. And typically, these meters are a little bit older in most occasions. So, we're overhauling that. We have the parts and components to be able to do that, literally tear the meter down in the pit where it lives and be able to rehab everything and have it back and running. So, normally, smaller stuff, it's just more cost-effective to replace. Larger stuff, it's more cost-effective to try and repair. So, we'll make that step first and then make decisions based on the outcome of that.
And I'm speaking from experience here. I've got a, and I don't want to get into particular constituent issues. Got one that's been waiting for months to get, I think, a residential meter inspected and fixed. So, how we deal with that? I'm not sure how that can sort of fall through the cracks or maybe go through a different process. Maybe there's something different about that meter. I would love to follow up on that. But for the larger meters, how long does it take to repair the larger meters?
It's going to depend on the inspection when we arrive at the location. It's going to depend on the inspection when we arrive at the location. If it's an overhaul of just the basic components of it, the turbine. Or the register or what have you, things like that. It can be a very short turnaround. Some things typically when commercial meters, we need to schedule it with like a shopping center or a school or something like that. So that can become a little more cumbersome. The commercial meters take a lot of arranging in order to make sure. That we're doing it at like midnight instead of doing it during the day. When we schedule it. So we can stretch that a little further.
So the, the issue that I'm thinking of, just my team has given me some background on it. Apparently what's happened is the team keeps going out there with a residential meter. And so they've come out multiple times and it's actually a larger meter. That's, that's the mix up. So we'll, we'll follow up with you guys on that and, and hopefully just get that addressed offline. I'm sorry to take you offline. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No worries. If you want to email me that location, Councilman, I'm glad to be looking to record it.
Will do. Thank you.
Yeah, if, if we can just, on, on this topic, just clarify. We were saying that one thousand or less goes by not sending a signal, but you're also talking about four thousand. A different account. So I assume we're talking about the whole network, not just Baltimore City?
So the four hundred thousand, we have four hundred thousand accounts, both about two hundred thousand in Baltimore County, two hundred thousand in Baltimore City. The two hundred thousand in Baltimore City. Send signals automatically to us. The two hundred thousand in Baltimore County, we actually have to go drive and collect signals. Through a mobile locator.
Right. And so that's, I guess, where I was heading is how do we track? How many accounts there's actually, that are actually problematic if we're not getting signals from. Some of the ones in the counties that aren't updated to the new meters. So how do we know exactly, you know, the, the broad range of the issue in that we're actually collecting all the revenues we're supposed to be getting from the county?
We, they, they, the equipment they use is the same. With the city or the county, it's just a different billing system. And it's just a different way of transmitting the same data. So.
All, all of, everybody in this network is, is updated to the smart meters?
They all have smart meters, yes.
Including the.
It's just the billing system that is different.
Okay, and the commercial accounts also in the counties are also on the smart meters?
Correct. Right, Steve? But they, we collect them through a drive-by mobile collection device rather than it's automatically sent to collectors.
So I, just to clarify this adjacent, there's two technologies, one in the city, one in the county. The city uses a AMI, AMI technology, which all it means is that. Not only do we have a smart ERTs or meters. Right? We have a network that oversees it, so it automatically receives the reads. Through the network. So our crews do not have to drive or walk any of the districts. To be able to get that meeting. That's AMI technology. The county has what we call AMR technology, which they do have smart meters. But there's no overarching network for that meter to read. And so there's a, what we call a mobile read. Whereby someone within the car, within a, a device, say a laptop. That, that drives up and down the corridors and that, that, that device. Then captures that read. So it's not automatically done. It's done through a drive-by sort of, right? And where they can't get the drive-by, then they do what we call. A manual read. They would have to then get out the car, see why it doesn't, see if they can get a manual read and then they continue on through their route. So it's, it's quite different than the city versus AMR versus AMI technology, just, just for clarity. So the city. Gets automatic reads. So we doesn't, we don't receive a read. And, and the city receives three reads a day, right? So our AMI technology, we gives you a read on that meter three times per day. Whereby Baltimore County, that mobile read is happening, if I'm not mistaken, Matt, quarterly.
So which, which system is more accurate?
So if, if you can think of, you know, Baltimore County, if we're doing quarterly reads because they AMR technology. We're getting one or so reads every quarter. With the city, we're getting three reads a day on your no, normal household. So every quarter, we're getting. Three times, you know, thirty days, ninety, two hundred and seventy reads, right? So what we're able to see now, even with our technology and how we're triaging customers. When they're having billing issues, we're looking at that, right? How is the re-reading? And so what we're seeing with some of the leaks are billing concerns. We're seeing spikes for two or three days. And it goes down and someone says, my billing is high. There's something wrong with my meter. And what we're asking the question now is what happened those two days? Because the meter doesn't repair itself. Right? When it breaks, it breaks. And so we're having, using a lot more technology and, and. And data points that this system provides us to be able to triage our customers' complaints.
So why, why isn't the county on our system if, if clearly the city reading system is, is more effective and efficient? Why aren't we insisting that they're on the same playing field?
The county has committed to moving over to our UMAX billing system. And so there's a committee within this Baltimore City and Baltimore County. Whereby we're working to, to transition them over to UMAX.
And when, when are they committed to having that full transition by?
The, 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 the project teams are now working out the scopes and the timelines I don't think has been defined yet.
Okay. And one last question on that before we move on to the next one. So in the city, we know when there is a leak that is detected, whether it's an underground leak or an inside leak. There's a formula that's used based on, you know, the highest two months. So if in the county, it's only read quarterly, does that mean that their credits are disproportionate to the credits that are being offered in the city? Because we only have quarterly reads for them, whereas in the city, we're having monthly?
I, I, maybe Latoya can answer that question. Historical data and how they do that, I, I, I don't, I don't know the difference. I'll.
I'm not sure if I understand your question, Council.
Let me ask it, let me ask it again. So on, on the city side, if, if a user has a, an underground leak, right? If I have an underground leak in my house. You would look at, you would look at the highest two billing cycles. And you would offer a formula credit once every few years based on the leak that I have. Now, if you go a mile up the road into the county and somebody else has that exact same leak at their house. What kind of, what kind of credit is being offered? Is it a two billing cycle credit also? Is it a one billing cycle credit formula? Cause even if it is a one billing cycle credit. If they're being read quarterly, that means that they're getting essentially a fifty percent higher credit. Than, than the same issue that somebody would be receiving in Baltimore City. So I just want to just check, I'm just asking basically the equity of credits that are offered when there is a, a leak detected between the city versus the county.
Okay, thank you. I, I understand your question now. Latoya, do we, what is our policy for the county?
It would be the same.
So it's, it's, it is two billing cycles. The, the idea for that is that we want to give the customers notice to see that there's a problem. And then have the ability to address it. And the only way they would know is if they actually saw their bill.
So you give, you give a county resident six months. A six-month formula, but a Baltimore City resident only gets a discount off of a two-month formula?
And, well, and the Baltimore City gets also the sewer reduction as well as other reductions, whereas the county, it's only water and their rates are also different.
And too, I, I do want to add to that, Matt. Baltimore County customers receive a bill every quarter and Baltimore City receives a bill every month. So how the billing is, is distributed is quite different. And so the formula will be quite different.
Right, but you do realize that, I mean, based on the enterprise system, that all users in the water system should be on level playing field. Clearly, this is a tremendous inequity between a city user versus a county user. And the fact that the city. Has, has been proactive and gone to this new, more efficient billing system. Which, which is a good thing. The fact that the county has actually taken a longer time to adjust and done the same thing. They actually seem like they're not incentivized to, cause, you know, county residents, why would they want that when they can? Essentially get a credit based off of six months of, of leakage, but in the city, it's only two months. And so what, all I'm saying is that I think that policy. Needs to be reviewed and that water leaks that are adjustments that are made on the city side. Until the county can adjust and get on the same playing field as us, which has been like this for a few years now. I think that water bill, water billing issues in the city that are detective and we find that there's a leak, whether it's in ground. Or, or above ground should also be based on a six-month formula. And not just a two-month formula. And I understand that there's different portions build, different ways in the city versus the county. But we could, we could do the same thing when it's an above-ground leak. You're not getting a sewer credit. You're only getting the sewer credit when it's, when it's an underground leak. And so therefore. When somebody has a leaking toilet in their basement that they don't detect and they only discover it after six months. They should be getting a credit off that total six months, just like their neighbor over the line in the county would be.
Uh, thank you for that. I, I just want to, for the clarity of this, this hearing. Make sure that, you know, the county is getting monthly reads, but giving out quarterly billing. So I just want to clarify that for the record.
Yeah, but Matt, didn't you say that it's going off of the quarterly bill? So it goes based off of two bills? So it's going off of six months of reading?
That is the policy for, for adjustments, yes.
Okay, so Director, are we able to make an adjustment in the city that? For the time being that we have the same level playing field for city residents as they do have for county residents? That for above-ground leaks, if you have a leaking toilet or any other above-ground leaks. That it'd also be based off of a six-month formula, just like it is in the county?
We can definitely look into that. Thank you.
Okay, so that will be a committee request. So we can get a response. To that, you know, in the next week or so, that'd be appreciated. Marcia, you can go on to the next, next question.
So Chair, I have a quick question.
Who is that?
Councilwoman Ramos.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Just going back to the twenty two thousand number. When we had this hearing in March, we didn't, I, I guess you were still investigating where this number was coming from because we didn't hear. That it was just an industry standard. We heard the contractors looking into it. And we'll get back to you when you have the next hearing. So how did, how did this happen? And is it, remember, my worry was that we were still working with the same contractor if there was all these messed up meters. And so I just want to hear a little bit more about how this was discovered. Was this discovered from an outside entity saying, oh yeah, this is an industry standard, so the number's not right? Or was it the actual, the contractor who put them in who said that?
So the. We, we obviously, we began looking into, because obvious, we were very concerned with that number as well. Cause it is such a staggering number. So we began looking into this and, and the data was showing, you know, what we're describing here today. So we, we dug deeper and the law department undertook a review also of some of the contracts and was digging into this number. And as we were researching this and looking at where this number could have come from. It was discussed, this five percent, you know, potential, you know, ninety five percent guarantee rate. That the vendors of this technology are applying. And that's where all of a sudden, we kept coming across that when we were looking at the industry standards and the standards that these companies have. And that's where that twenty two thousand number came from. And when we, when we start, started putting all of this stuff together, reviewing it internally with the law department, it did not come from. The contractors, they did not alert this to us. We, we determined this, discovered this with the law department.
Okay. And then the thousand non-reads are for the whole network or just for the city?
Right now, that is looking just at the UMAX data that we get from the city. So the county, we can, we can look at that, those reports immediately. The county, we don't have those numbers. It's not as clear for those numbers. But that is just looking at the UMAX data for the city where we can get real-time accurate data.
So are you, is Ms. Curtis's office getting still some complaints from? The, the county in terms of billing issues, since we don't actually know what that number is?
Well, we, I, I don't want to answer for, for Latoya, but I do know that one of the issues that Ms. Collins will get to in a bit is about the open work orders and tickets. That were issued with the county. We've made tremendous progress on that. So we have addressed a vast majority and only have a little over one hundred of those six thousand left. Un, unresolved. Ms. Curtis, can you talk about hearing anything from the county or, or any of that stuff?
Yes, we do occasionally get billing issues from the county. We have, we have standard meetings with the county to address those. And we now have integrated system with our city works. So they're able to enter. Any type of billing dispute or meter disputes within city works. And we work together with the meter shop to address those. It's a way of getting away from all of the emails and getting, trying to track all the emails. So. But it's not, it's not a substantial amount. I can get numbers if you would like, but we still do receive them periodically.
Thanks. And yeah, I remember this six thousand number that still had to be worked through and that the department had to, was going to have to, you know. Staff up in order to address the six thousand. So how did that, you staffed up and it's now down to a thousand, did you say?
I, I'll be going through that, Councilwoman, in the, in this very next question.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll wait then. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, is it okay to go on to the next?
Let's keep going.
Thank you. So the next question is, as the Councilwoman just noticed, noted. Is how many open tickets remain to be resolved? And this related to. Numbers in one of the reports about the billing system. So I'm going to give a lot of dates and numbers, but Mr. Chairman, I can send you these. So you can have it for the, for the file if you would like. Back in April of twenty twenty one, on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. The county gave us an Excel file list of eight thousand six hundred seventy eight open ticket escalations. With, with our program. On the very next day, April twenty eighth, they shared a revised Excel list after removing duplicates. Which gave us a new number of seven thousand seven hundred nineteen. We went through that Excel file. We identified a single ticket was frequently associated with multiples and. One for each note in the ticket and, and sorted through all of those. And after getting through all of those notes and consolidating them appropriately, we ended up with a, a number of six thousand three hundred and ten unique tickets. That needed to be addressed. So as of the end of October, October thirty first of this year. The current status of those six thousand three hundred and ten are that five thousand eighty-six are resolved, which means all work is completed, signed off, reviewed by the supervisor. And removed from the work list. And that left us with about one thousand two hundred and twenty-four service requests, and these are in progress. Forty were duplicate addresses and were combined. One thousand sixty-four have been closed. That means the work is finished, but the issue has not yet been approved to be resolved by the reviewing supervisor. So it just has one more step to go through. Which leaves us the hundred and twenty service requests under review and pending resolution that Mr. Garbart referred to. I do want to point out, as Steve did earlier, that we are linking our UMAX, which is our billing system. With city works so that these work orders can be generated directly to the meter shop to be resolved. So we make sure we have a, a. A paper, paper, a, an electronic process in place to make sure that these requests get into the meter shop. And are addressed and that provides us a way in which to close out and resolve that work order. So, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I would be happy to give you those details so that you would have that for the, the file record. Did, did that answer your question, Councilwoman?
Yes, it did. So it sounded like, you know, the working through there though, you didn't have to staff up initially. Like we thought you might have to, but you were able to work through the process. I mean, that's a pretty. Quick timeframe from March to now to resolve over five thousand. Quick timeframe from March to now to resolve over five thousand, um, uh, issues.
I agree.
Thing. I'm not, I mean, it's a good thing. I'm glad they're resolved. I'm glad they're resolved. Um. But I know at the last hearing, we talked about having to staff up and needing to get, you know, a lot of, of capacity in order to do that. And so that, but that wasn't needed. You were able to resolve them all?
We were able to resolve them all. I think that goes to the point that a lot of these are programming. Um, issues and transmission issues that, um, can be very easily fixed. Um, rather than installs or, or, or dismantling and, and rehabs.
Okay, great. And so the remaining ones are probably your harder cases that need a lot more time and, um, actually need to dig in the ground to, to figure out what's going on.
Steve, is that correct? The remaining hundred and twenty, so those are some of our bigger ones on that list that need more time and effort to, to deal with, right?
Exactly. A lot of scheduling, a lot of inspection and scouting. And then the preparation that goes into it, that is correct.
Great, thank you. That's all I had for right now, Mr. Chair. I have a bunch of questions about our relationship with the county, but I think we're going to get to that.
Sure. So Marcia, you can move, you can move on to the next question and we'll get to that.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So the next question I have is how are adjustments calculated under the dispute resolution process? And this gets back, uh, Mr. Chairman, to a little bit of what you were commenting on before between the city and the county. So, um, I will just kind of touch on the, the two standard, um, adjustments that we make. And, um, I'm sure Latoya could add to anything or help answer any questions that the committee may have. The first, as you referenced, was the underground leak adjustment. Uh, and this is where typically a, an underground water pipe, uh, ruptures or develops a severe leak. Between, uh, the house and the water meter. So it's on the private side. And because it's underground. Um, it's, and it's not bubbling, erupting from the front yard. Um, it may not be as easily detectable by the customer. And their only way that they may see a change is when they get a bill. Um, so because that leakage or break is occurring outside of the home, it means that the water. That is being lost out of that pipe is not going into the sanitary sewer system. It's just going into the ground and being absorbed. Um, so as a result, um, the adjustment that we make for that kind of exterior leak. Um, is, uh, an adjustment both on the water consumption side and the sewer. Consumption side, because we are adjusting for the water that never got into the house. And we're adjusting for the water that never got into the sewer system. Um, we do ask the customer to provide a receipt from a licensed plumber. Uh, containing the date of the repair and the type of repair. So we have that on record because we want to make sure. That, um, that the adjustment occurs after the problem has been solved. We don't want to give an adjustment. And then the next month the bill comes out and the same. Problem is there. So we want to make sure that an action was taken to correct the problem so that we know the. Usage will go back to normal. Because we only adjust, make these adjustments, uh, once every two years for customers. Um, the, the second type of adjustment that we would do. Um, is the interior or situational adjustment. This is where a leak. Is occurring within the house itself. And by leak, I mean perhaps the toilet. Uh, there's a little flapper device that's in the, uh, tank. If that doesn't seat properly. Uh, closely, completely close off that hole after flushing. Then there will be a con- constant leak going directly from that toilet tank into the sanitary line. Uh, that's called a situational leak. It could be, um. A problem with actually an ice maker and a refrigerator, or there could be. Um, a faucet that doesn't shut off completely. Uh, it could be a number of internal activities. In this case, the water that's, that's escaping from these locations is going down into the sanitary sewer. And once that clean water hits the sewer, it's still got to be treated, just like as if you flushed the toilet. Uh, so we only grant adjustments for those types of situational leaks on the water consumption side. And I think, um, I don't know, I, I may be being presumptuous. I know, uh, Councilman Conway, you mentioned about. Adjustments in your remarks not being complete. I think some customers feel they should get. Both water and sewer adjusted for those internal leaks. And the problem we have is we still get the water in the, in the sanitary pipe and we still have to treat it. So all of those costs associated with treating that water still have to go forward. And I think a lot of customers don't understand that, or if they do, don't appreciate it. They would prefer to get a full adjustment for everything. Um, we do need to, uh, look at two consecutive bills again, uh, Mr. Chairman, which you pointed out as being a difference between the city and the county. And, um, these kinds of internal adjustments are only granted once every three years. So we do encourage people to really check. All of their systems. It's, it's amazing what you can lose through a simple flapper. In a, um, toilet tank that's leaking all the time, twenty-four seven. Um, and as a result, I do want to put a pitch in for the customer service portal. Uh, this is something that, um, customers can use and they can look at their. Uh, hourly reads and their daily reads, their monthly reads. They can see their bills. Um, and these, this portal can show how there'll be constant for a leak that's happening. That they're unaware of will show twenty-four hour usage, uh, on that meter. And a lot of times people feel, well, that's because the meter's broken. But what's happening here is there's a leak that they're not hearing, they're not catching. Um, and then it's just constantly releasing water and that, as soon as you start releasing water, there's room for more water to come through the, the water meter and. They get a higher bill. Um, so we do encourage people to think about getting that, um, use of that portal. Um, that can give them, they can look at it anytime from their mobile device or, and their laptop or whatever they have. And, um, it, we also have a webpage about, you know, problems with higher water bills and people can look at that to help them diagnose what may be happening in their own home. Um, so those are the two types of adjustments, um, that we routinely, um, manage. And, uh, I'm sure Latoya can help with any questions you may have.
Okay, I see no questions. So if any of, um, any members of the committee or the council have any questions, feel free to just raise your hand or, or speak up. But if not, we'll just continue down the line of questions that you have.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Head Councilman Burnett?
Um, well, my questions were around, uh, Water Affordability and Equity Act. Um, I guess my question to Marcia, is that, is that a part of the questions that were sent ahead? Should I hold off on those? Until there's a presentation or part of the presentation?
Uh, it's actually the next question, Councilman.
All right, I'll hold off then. Thank you.
Everybody, everybody's doing very good job of looking forward.
That's, uh, let's keep going, Marcia and.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, okay. So the last question that I have, uh, received. Is what is the status of implementing the Water Accountability and Equity Act? When will the residents start seeing relief? Uh, so the Water Accountability and Equity Act, which was passed several years ago and amended. Slightly, um, after its enactment. Um, was a, a very involved bill that covered water billing, uh, water bill assistance. Uh, water bill, water turnoffs. Um, it's a very comprehensive bill. And, um. One of the problems we had was that under the prior administration, there was a mayoral executive order that, um, delayed implementation of it. During the COVID pandemic. But in addition, um, I will say that, uh, this is a very, um, complex law. Uh, that required us to really look at deep into our billing system and customer service before getting this going. And in particular, the Water For All, which is what is the name of the, um, new water bill assistance program. The water fill, Water For All program is different from any of the assistance programs we have typically done in DPW. Our programs, when we had the senior citizen assistance, low income assistance. Uh, and then the more recent, uh, BH two O assistance programs. That once you met the, uh, criteria for income eligibility by household size. You got basically a flat rate discount on your bill. Um, and that is something that can be programmed into the Umax system and was programmed in. Um, and, and for BH two O, that meant you got a forty-five percent discount on your consumption charges for water and sewer. And your bay restoration and stormwater fee were removed from your bill. Um, the Water For All effort is, is a different program in that it looks at the. Unique circumstances of a specific household. And by unique, I mean it looks at what is their estimated annual income? What is their household size? And what is their estimated annual water bill? So you're correlating, you're developing a discount based on. Um, the income and on their bill. And you're creating a unique discount for that customer. So I could maybe get a fifty dollar more a year discount than say, my neighbor next door. Based on my income and my, um, estimated annual water bill. So this is, this is our nuanced program that had to be fitted into our billing system. Um, we also. Had to look at how we were going to address another group of. People, this is tenants who are served by a master or central meter. They may be in like a garden apartment situation, or they may be in a high-rise or a mid-rise building where one meter is servicing everyone. That creates an issue for us because these tenants who may need the assistance. Do not have a relationship with the water utility. And by that, I mean, they don't, they don't get a water bill directly from us. They're. Either paying their landlord through their rent, or they're paying their landlord through a separate. Agreed upon amount, or maybe a management company is billing them on a routine basis. So what happens under that instance is we don't have a bill to discount. And we have to figure out a way to get the funds into the pockets of the people who need the assistance. Uh, that has been one of the more challenging. Um, but we think we've, um, got a, a program in place. We're looking at a way in which to. Um, rather than trying to send a check every month or whatever to do a prepaid card. Um, and this would help get that funding to the families that need it. I will say that, that that has been. Um, this has been a long process. It's required us to work with finance. Um, Baltimore City IT has been key in helping us. Get these, um. Various of applications and the formula and everything all digitized so that there's an automatic process that's going on. We're working with the mayor's office of children and family success who handled our BH two O program very beautifully. Um, and, um, they will be our partners again for the Water For All. Um, and so we relied on them for a lot of good guidance. Um, and this has been a challenge, to be honest. Um, but, uh, we are very close to completion. Um, we've, um, nailed down a lot of things that we're still hanging out there. And so we're, we're very. Excited that we will be able to get this fully rolling, uh, very soon.
Marcia, you can keep going on to the next question until, unless we see any hands raised on those topics.
Those were the only questions that I received.
Okay. I will go through in the order in which I, uh, I see council members, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, so the, for the, the BH, the, um. Uh, the folks who are in the, currently enrolled in the BH two O program, will they be automatically rolled over? Into, uh, the, uh, Water Accountability and Equity Act?
Uh, no, it's, it, it was when we create, let me give a little bit of history. When we created the BH two O program and we had the senior citizen assistance program, we were able to roll those seniors. Two O because the formula, the discount, everything was the same. Um, it just, there was just more seniors that were able to. Become eligible. With the Water For All, you can't really roll somebody over because you don't. The BH two O doesn't ask the question of, you know, what is your average annual water bill? You end up having to reapply. So for folks who are currently on BH two O and are still covered by each BH two O, they're fine. Uh, but when they're ready to re-enroll, they'll re-enroll in Water For All. And they'll just have to fill out the form and, and follow the process. It's, it's just not a one-to-one comparison.
Um, and I, and I guess broadly speaking, what are the, or has the agency set enrollment goals and timelines, um, for this program?
Um, we have not set them yet. We're still nailing down the details of this, but what we feel we have because of our relationship with. The mayor's office of children and family success. Uh, one of the things we did early on in the BH two O program was to, um. Look at people who were already qualified for comparable programs and, uh, reach out to them to get them enrolled. We also, as part of this process, set up a website for the Water For All discount program and encouraged people to. Um, read about it and to, um, fill out an expression of interest form, which is like a pre-application form. And we have about eighteen, my last, it's a little over eighteen hundred people who've already enrolled. In that expressions of interest. So when we're ready to release the program, those folks will be ready to go and it will only take a few other. Application processes that will roll that over into the application process. And they may, then they have to just upload their documents and they'll be ready to go. Um, we'll also be working with, um. Children and Family Success because they, um, always have clients coming in and they have had clients who are always looking for. Assistance from other programs. So they have been an excellent referral point. Um, we will also be doing, um. Outreach, obviously through our mailing list, through our, um, community contacts, through our communications program. Uh, and through your offices, um, to help guide people to this information. But right now I can't give you any hard and fast numbers because we just want to get the program in place first.
Uh, and, uh, last for, for this round, um, uh, I guess. I didn't hear you mention it. If you did, my apologies, but I guess what is the timeline overall, um, for implementation that the agency has set?
Um, we would like to get it done by this month, but it's, it's predicated on getting a couple of other, um. Programs in place and nailed down. That is, as long as it can get through the processes, that's the way we'll go.
Okay. I, I have more, Mr. Chair, but I'll, you know, pass it on to others.
No, it's all right. You can keep going.
Okay, um, so the, the other, uh, was around, uh, the law, the law requires a customer advocate. Um, whose job is to improve the fair treatment of customers, uh, was posted in July from what we could see. Um, is the time, what's the timeline? I guess two parts to this, uh, the timeline for bringing that person on board. Um, and if, and, and also, um, is the plan to ensure that there's no conflict of interest? And then making sure that this person, uh, is hired outside of DBW, since they're supposed to be sort of a direct advocate for the customer.
Well, let me answer your second question first. The, the person who's acting is the customer advocacy office. For those who may not remember. In the law, it creates this separate group that acts like an oversight body and can, um. Act at the request of a customer if they feel that they did not get the service or. if they feel that they did not get the service or the fulfillment would be their adjustment or whatever it might be that's bothering that they feel we did not take seriously. So this group kind of acts independently of DPW. But as the Law Department explained when we were having hearings on the bill, they have to be an employee to access at any time the records of customers. So they have to be DPW. That being said, they haven't, they are in that delicate role of, okay, I'm a DPW employee, but this is my charter. This is what I have to do. This is what I'm here for, to advocate for the customer.
The first question was timeline for bringing the person onboard and getting them going?
Yes, and I don't have that timeline. I do know that we got some excellent resumes. May I get back to you on that, sir?
Yep, can we add that?
Yeah, that'd be the second one, second request. That's the timeline of when they're gonna hire somebody for that position.
Yes, thank you. I apologize, sir, if I don't have that. We do have to go through the process of hiring.
Okay. Councilwoman Burnett, you good?
I'm good for this round. When you start going back around, I'll have some more.
No problem. All right, next up, I see Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question related to WAEA, and then I have a separate question. One of the tenants of the bill is also to have, if the customer is not satisfied with the escalation in decision, to appeal to the Environmental Control Board. And I'm wondering if that's started to happen at all? It sort of relates to our previous conversation. And if so, and so what, and also, what is that process that DPW has laid out for when people can get those kinds of appeals?
My understanding is that ECB has already heard some of these. Latoya, could you maybe step through the process of how we advise customers if they're dissatisfied with their options are?
Yes, so, no problem. If someone is disputing their bill and we give them an adjustment or choose not to give them adjustment based off our policy, then they will receive a letter from me stating that this is our decision. And then from there, in the letter, it outlines the process of reaching out to the Environmental Control Board to request a hearing. And then, you know, from there, the hearing takes place and administrative officer would make a decision on the hearing. They would either uphold what we already decided or they may have us overturn it and have a recommendation for us. And from that point, Director Mitchell has the final review of how we process that recommendation.
And I would add that all decisions so far of the Environmental Control Board have been upheld by the department. So we are working very closely with them and we respect the effort that they're putting into this to consider these issues.
Would it be helpful, Councilwoman, if we gave you a copy of what the letter looks like?
Yeah, that would be great because I haven't had an occasion to have to refer somebody to this process.
We'll make sure to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then not related to WAEA, if that's all right, Mr. Chair, is I want to continue this conversation around the relationship between the city and the county. We've already seen in this hearing that their billing system is different. They're, hopefully, they'll get to the technology that we need. I'm still very worried that because they have different rates that, you know, they're using our infrastructure and our water but not paying the same that our consumers are. And I know that there's some rectifying of the situation. It's fiscal year and then the county is supposed to give us the, you know, what it actually costs. They give us that, that, that step. But I, I'm not convinced that we're still getting what we should be getting. And that's just evidenced by just seeing in the budget book last time, we could actually see that the cost of doing business in the county was not being compensated by actually what we were getting. So are we, is there anything being done to try to deal with this?
Okay, there's a lot to unpack in that question.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll take a stab at it and then I'll probably hand it off to Matt. But the county customers only receive water service from us. So they are only getting a water bill for water consumption, number one. Number two, they are only paying for our operational and maintenance costs of that water. Set aside capital projects for a moment. And they do set their rates that goes to the Board of Estimates. And if they don't collect sufficient funds during that year, they remit what is owed to us for the operational maintenance costs. Under capital programs, while the county takes care of their own sewer collection and charge their own residents for that sewer service, they do use our wastewater treatment plants and some of their flow goes through our pipes. So they pay a proportional share of that usage. For example, at Back River Wastewater Treatment Plant, approximately 50% of the flow is from the county. 50% is the city. So anything that happens there, operational maintenance and capital cost, it's 50/50. Now, on to capital costs. There are times when we must make upgrades to say a pipe that both county and city flow goes through. And let's say this particular pipe, 46% of the flow, we calculate, is from the county. They are then responsible for 46% of the capital cost to work on that pipe. It could be either cleaning and lining, total replacement, enlargement of the pipe. It could be any of those things. So they pay 46% of the cost. And we do that through a model that determines who's using it, where's the flow coming from, and calculating it. And it's the same in the wastewater treatment plants. In the case of Patafco, we have about 68% of the flow going to Patafco is Baltimore County, Howard County, and maybe a little of Anarundel County. And they share, and they provide 68% of the capital cost for everything that is included for that plant. And we pay the rest as part of there. Those capital costs are done project by project. They front the money, what they owe to us, project by project. They, they get their funds to do so through a metropolitan charge. And that metropolitan charge appears on the annual tax bill of a county resident. So that, when they're paying their taxes, they're also paying a metropolitan charge, their share of all those costs. So that is what makes it difficult for residents who live in the city looking at residents who live in the county. They're convinced they're not paying their fair share. And, you know, these costs fluctuate from year to year. As we all know, we've been hearing about supply chains. The costs for chemicals have gone up. Materials have gone up. And so that would be reflected in their share, just like it would be reflected in what we have to pay for. Matt, did you want to add anything to that really simple statement that I made?
This is clearly a complicated issue. It was written in, it's in our 1972 agreement on how we allocate costs. The 1972 agreement is based on overlapping state and local laws going back to the 1920s, which, many of which are arcane and don't speak to this. So there is a need to review that information to make sure it is accurate. One thing that is very important to all of this is, as Ms. Collins said, is on the Capitol side of the House, looking at which jurisdiction uses which percentage, let's say, of an asset. And that is handled by what's called our Water Analysts Office. That used to be a very robust office. It has dwindled somewhat. We're in the process of strengthening that office to make sure that we have accurate allocations of the usage. It's all based on detailed modeling, based on all sorts of data. And that's something we are very interested in doing, is strengthening that office, not only in the water side of the house, but also in the sewer side of the house as well, to make sure that we can accurately know through modeling which jurisdiction is using which assets and then be able to account for that through our capital costs.
So since we're under a consent decree to upgrade, you know, water and sewer systems and the water that the counties use goes through those systems. So are they, is this formula that you're talking about in terms of, you know, the replacement of the pipes, not because it's broken, but because we have to upgrade it, also included in those costs to the county?
Whenever we look at a capital, so a couple of things. When we look at actually building the asset, we're looking at the cost allocation. When we're looking at the priority of when we're going to do the asset, we're looking at just our usage and our needs. And that is another area where we are strengthening coordination because the county is under a consent decree as well. Their choke points or other issues may not be the same place as ours and vice versa. So making sure that everything is lined up is a critical issue so that we can adjust these once and for all. But you're absolutely right. A pipe doesn't know where it starts at the city. It's, you know, moves into the county. And, you know, most of the time, the straight line is the quickest to get to the treatment plan. And that just might take off a portion of the city or go into the city and the county. So that level of coordination in our engineering offices is critical when we're planning these projects out. And it is being strengthened now through ongoing meetings and communications.
And they do pay for their portion of all the consent decree projects if we are carrying flow or handling their flow in those pipes.
Is that, setting, stormwater, right? Stormwater doesn't know any boundaries either. And yet, we've got some significant, I have in my district, and my colleagues have in other significant stormwater projects that are about to happen. And the water, you know, it comes from everywhere. And so, you know, I don't think stormwater is part of the consent decree, but I think it's something that, you know, we probably have to look at as well, once we're doing this. And I'd be interested also to continue the conversation with the department as these two entities start to be a lot more robust to make sure that they're, you know, we're actually, you know, billing the county properly. Because I think that's a huge issue, particularly since in the city where, you know, the rates are going up 9% each year for a little while. And that's totally unfair to our residents if we're not also getting the same kind of, from the other 200,000 people in the other parts of the state that we're servicing. So that's it. That's all I have for right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess just two questions. One is more of a clarification, and this is from Marcia. So you did mention that the Water For All will be, you partnered with the Office of Family and Children and Success, which the CAP centers are under. And I know that they basically started in-person by appointment at two main locations. One is the Northwest CAP Center. Is, just, I guess, some more clarification. Will they'll be, were there, are you going to have a person there from DPW as they have begun to open? And then I know there's going to be staggered openings at the other CAP centers as they, you know, figure out any problems from the two that they've already opened? Or is there someone that's already on their staff that just works with you, your office?
Thank you for that question. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, when they took on our BH2O program, we pay them, we, for the personnel that's required to do that work and any porting laptops or computers or whatever is necessary in which to produce the program. Because they get funding depending on the, for example, the energy program that they take care of, they get funding for that. And they can't have those people who are paid in that manner work on our BH2O program. So we knew we had to fund separately. So we have made very clear and have been, always been very upfront with them that we will take, pay whatever it costs to get the sufficient personnel in there and any, you know, equipment that they need to do their job. They have been doing a great job, I will say. And quite frankly, we are not in the business of assistance programs. We have them and we pay for them, but we are not schooled in them. And that's why we like working with the CAP centers. Plus, they're scattered around the city and residents may already be going there for other assistance program that gives us an opportunity for them to say, hey, we've got this other program. We're looking at your income. We think you're eligible. And then they can get transferred to that person. During COVID, I know they were doing a lot over the phone and intermittent information. And they were making arrangements to mail out paper copies and to have people drop off forms and so on. And I think that, depending on how, God help us, this COVID continues, they may have to function that way for a little while longer.
Well, thank you for that nice agency partnership that we definitely need more of that.
They're fantastic.
And then I guess the last, I don't know who can answer this, this is my second question. About the water billing online payments that, you know, are monthly. How is that going? Are there any additional improvements that have been done within the last year or since COVID? Or have there been any problems with that, with the online monthly payments of water bills?
Good afternoon. This is Henry Raymond. I'll address that. The Finance Department has responsibility for the online payment portal. Excuse me. Not just for water bills, but real property and other types of bills. To my knowledge, there have not been any significant customer service issues with individuals being able to make online payments for water bills or other bills. Now, with that said, from time to time, the portal may go down for an hour or some unspecified period of time. But, you know, we're always able to have the technicians do the research to determine what threw the system offline and bring it back up. So we're not having any problems like the portal's been down for a week and nobody can pay bills or 1,000 people paid bills and the payments didn't get posted. Primarily, the issues are credit card payments might get rejected because the wrong account number was used. Debit card payments might get rejected again because an individual keyed in an incorrect account number. If you key in an incorrect account number, the payment's not going to go through. Now, that's the present system. There's been an initiative with B sit in the Finance Department to identify a new payment partner. And it's anticipated that we will go to the Board of And it's anticipated that we will go to the Board of Estimates in December with, uh, a recommendation for a new payment portal provider. And this payment portal would be, uh, more robust than the present payment portal and be able to accommodate more bill types. So I hope that's responsive to your, your question.
Yeah, yes, it is. Thank you. That, and thank you for that information. That helps to show that you're continually monitoring and trying to get, um, better and better with the, you know, with that payment, online payment process. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr.
I was just gonna say, uh, as a final comment, one of the other things that we're trying to do with the new payment portal is to do it in a manner at less cost to the constituents for the transactions.
Awesome.
Fees will be lower as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Henry.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, next up, I see Councilman Conway. Do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. I want to, um, ask a couple of questions that I think we've touched on, but I just want to make sure I get pretty, uh, clear answers on them. Um, so at, at, at the last hearing, we talked about an initial response time for, um, disputed bills, um, for, for council members for five days, 15 days for the public. Um, how are we doing on that target? Has that target improved? What is our actual time for, uh, resolution?
So, excuse me, I do have an update too now, um, on the building disputes. I'll give that after I answer your question. But our goal is to have all of our, um, emails or disputes responded to and answered if we can within two business days. Um, there are going to be times, I think we kind of discussed that early in the meeting, where we have to wait, um, like to get a meter inspection or some other additional things done. But if, if it's something that's within CSSD's, um, you know, purview, our goal is to answer those things within two business days.
And that's council or public all three the same way?
Yes, that's what, that's what we're shooting for. Yes, correct.
And do we know, um, how we're doing right now?
I do not have that information, but I can get that information. We are starting to track that information. And the program that Marcia mentioned earlier, the JIP, that, that will actually give us real live data. And we're scheduled to, um, go live with that within the next two weeks. So, um, I think by the next time we have this meeting, we, we should have really good metrics to, to be able to provide.
Awesome. I look forward to it.
Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, no, please.
I was gonna, the question came up earlier. I was able to get the information from the team. There are a total of, um, 1866 billing disputes that we have in queue. Um, 1,246 are waiting action and 620 are actively being worked on.
And, uh, is it possible at all to share that data publicly? I know on Open Baltimore, otherwise to sort of show how we're moving through these issues?
Uh, I'm not sure. I guess that's the answer would come from Matt or Jason.
Hi, I think, um, we, we can take that back and we can discuss, uh, with IT about all of that because there are some limitations on what we can share for our water data. But we can take that back and discuss that internally and get back to you all.
Certainly. Uh, I, I think, um, the, the reason for that is just to give people, uh, to give citizens some, um, understanding of how long to expect to wait and otherwise. Um, the other question I had, and I think we touched on this a little bit, it sounded like, um, CSSD is, is fully staffed, right? Do we have any, um, open positions? Are there any vacant positions at the moment?
We do have some vacancies at the moment.
Uh, how many vacancies do we have?
I would have to get back to you on that, but I do know we have a few, um, customer care analysts positions, um, available. And we're going to be hosting those soon with the process of working with HR as we speak.
Okay. Um, and with that, can you provide a, uh, an org chart? Just so we understand how those people were put up and, um, what we're seeing as far as, uh, our ability to fill those positions. I think we, we know that there's a shortage across the city and I wouldn't be surprised if that's affecting, uh, your and other parts of the operation as well. Um, and so I guess I'll sort of throw that question out there. Are we seeing, um, staff shortages in other parts of this operation that makes it difficult for us to, to get this work done?
Not necessarily. I mean, we, you know, we've been working through some backlog information that, um, has been there before I came on board. And, um, the director has been here. I, I think, you know, more staff, of course, would help us get through issues quicker. But I, I think the staff is working well with what we have right now. As you can see, those emails that, um, we had from the county, we collaboratively worked with the meter shop to get those done. And we were able to get through them. So, um, the team is stepping up at this point.
Um, Councilman, I, I, I would add that what we are finding is that a few employees are doing a whole lot of the, the, the type of work. And we need to, one of the things we're working on is, um, helping, uh, supervisors and managers delegate, uh, some of that work as well as training and making sure the employees get what they need to do the job, uh, well, and holding them accountable. Because if someone is carrying all the burden and other people aren't, we need to make, we need to, we need to address that. So I think, um, we're, we are seeing a lot more spreading out of that work and taking it off of, um, just one or two or a handful of people and, and helping level set that, that playing field.
And, and this is Jason. I want to add to Matt and, and Latoya's. I also think, I think as, as we getting through this backlog and, and really tackling some of the core issues is really pounding on training and process improvements, right? And, you know, this is not something that you, you throw bodies at, our staff at. You make sure that the processes are solid, that they're well-intended and that they meet the outcomes that we're looking for. And then based upon that, now as you, uh, Latoya and Matt mentioned, looking at how, how staff is interacting with those processes and making sure that we see an even distribution, minimum, uh, daily quotas and different things of that nature. So that, uh, you know, as we add staff, they're added to a culture that's, that's, that's meant on process and, 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 and performance, right? With a lot of guidance and training. And so, you know, as we are looking to open up some positions, in some cases, we won't directly hire immediately because we're still doing that baseline or the current staffing loads. And we want to make sure that when staff come aboard that they're, they, we have solid processes that yields the results that we want.
Right, thank you. Uh, and that's good to hear. I mean, you guys have made it, but it seems like a ton of progress. Um, the other question I had was with regards to the open tickets. And I know, um, I, I know Marcia, you, you went through this pretty quickly. I just want to make sure I understand what you mean by some of this. And, and so it sounded like we had, uh, 120 open tickets remaining. Is that correct? And that's between the city and the county?
Yes, that was the figure that we gave. Yes, sir.
And, um, do we know that breakdown between, uh, public and private? Um, she's not public and private, um, commercial and residential?
Um, I do not.
Mr. Strickland, do you have that number by any chance? Number of, uh, commercial and residential of the one, 120 that's remaining?
I do not. We cannot get that information. I've said he works and provide it back. I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay. And then, um, for, for the ones that are remaining, how, how long have they been open? Um, are we talking days, weeks, longer? Um, do we have a sense of that?
I would think we'd have to look at each one. Um, could we add that when we get back to you about the breakdown?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve. And then I had some questions about the meter shop. So, um, uh, we're, we're still hearing about scheduling difficulties, inaccurate tools, staff and meter repair and meter reads, issues around that. Um, I know there were also some, some staffing issues, uh, in the meter shop. What, what is our current staffing? How many vacancies do we have there?
Um, as, as Jason mentioned earlier, um, right now, we probably, if I'm looking at the numbers right, we probably have as many as about 10 to 12 positions we're looking to fill. Um, some of them are because of departures, um, retirements. Um, and for other reasons that we're going to be, um, establishing and promoting folks in the, in the other positions that we're trying to ramp up on. Um, and that includes a robust training program that we're putting in place for not just old boarding, but for continued education of all of our, um, all of our staff. Um, we are working diligently as in regards to equipment with trying to come into the, to the modern era, uh, utilizing tablets and things like that to automate the process and try to knock down on having, um, as many like mechanicalers, if you will, or transpose numbers and things like that. We're working diligently with a vendor to get all that, all those things up and running. And probably about 80, 70 to 80% of that equipment has arrived. We have to put a lot of connecting parts together and then start training on all of that type of equipment as well. We're going to be starting right from the baseline of turning the tablet on to then navigating to the different applications that they would need to navigate through in order to successfully be able to complete tickets and do things like that.
And, and Steve, you said there's 10 to 12, um, positions you're looking to fill. I, I think, I, how many, how many total position, how many people do we have now? Maybe that's an easier question.
Uh, right now, as far as meter technicians, it is in the mid 30s or somewhere in that neighborhood. I, I could get you an exact number. Um, we have had a, a couple of departures over the past couple of weeks. So that's why we want to go back and make sure I get you a good, accurate number.
Okay.
And then some of those, like I was speaking to about 10 or 12, the film would be to reform those positions along with other components we're putting in place in order to train and do all those types of things.
And, and, and this is Jason. I wanted to add to Steve, you know, as Steve mentioned, um, we're moving to tablets. And what that, that was, what that mean to you and the public is that, you know, DPW is looking to transition our meters from a paper, more archaic system to a 21st system. Uh, uh, since we have a UMAX, a city work system whereby we're, we're removing our staff from dealing with a lot of paper in the field to a tablet that will be able to engage in, um, our, our work management system and also, uh, pieces of our, our, our utility system. So that to Steve's point, we can update, um, reads and, 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 and make sure our, our electronic RE, uh, ERTs are in the field, have the right number and connect it to the right accounts, that we can close work orders real time in the field and take pictures and upload that. Um, you know, so that too, we'll be looking at performance, right? And process and making sure that a meter check is, 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 you know, on average is dealing with a certain amount of meters per day, whether that's 30 or 40, you know, those type of benchmarks. So that we can look at productivity numbers, efficiency numbers, whether that's small, uh, you know, meters or large meters. So we're really transforming our meters. We, we just made a huge shift by working our meters in what we call in cycles, right? We have 15 billing cycles and our, our folks are going cycle by cycle. And that's the reason why Matt is able to clearly articulate what meters are, are working or what meters may need some triaging at that pit. And because we're looking at those numbers every single morning at nine o'clock in the morning. And so we're making a huge transition to leverage the technology that we have here in Baltimore City. And I, I must say, coming from a place that's the technology hub, you know, Baltimore City is primed to have, you know, if we continue to go in the same direction, one of the most modern utilities that we have with, one of the few utilities in the country that have a full, robust AMI technology. Um, so even some of the most first-class utilities doesn't have that type of technology. And our staff is right now at the, at the, you know, at a crossover. We're going down that path of really leveraging this technology, really getting out and doing preventative maintenance and really, you know, leveraging data so that we can make better decisions. And so I just, I have to say that and, and to, you know, as we look at tools and, and to your point, equipment and staffing, we want to make the right decisions, you know, just because I have a vacancy doesn't mean that's the best way to utilize it, the way I've utilized it the last two decades, right? And so what Steve and, and Matt is doing is saying, how do we better utilize it for what we want this utility be in, in the future? And that's the reason why we're not making knee jerk, you know, hires and, you know, fast decisions because we're, where we want to change this utility to go forward in the future and how it operates. And we're taking the time to do it the right way.
No, that, that makes a lot of sense. And I, I, I hope with that sort of strategic approach that we can, you know, continue to see improvements, not in just digging out of the backlog, but hoping that we never end up in that position again. Um, and then I had, uh, just the last question here, um, with regard to the, the process for the work orders. Um, can you kind of talk me through the, that process? And, and what is the average timeline from, um, creation to completion of a, a, a work order in the meter shop? Like how, how long does that generally take? Um, just so that we can sort of be as transparent as possible when we're, we're getting complaints about these issues.
Sure thing. Um, upon receiving, you know, any type of service request that turns into a work order or a referred work order from another, uh, department, right now, it's, it's kind of difficult for us to say this is how long it would take on average because of, you know, pre-COVID situations that we dealt with. We're still working through a backlog, which we, our team here at the meter shop has done an amazing job with knocking down that backlog and it's coming, it, it's getting better and better and better every week. So we have several different forms of data that we were using and we're getting everything consolidated into city work. So we can be more concise on that data. And I know we have durations that we want to establish to make sure that we're providing CSS, uh, CSSD back with the information that they need to get, but also at the same time, making sure the health of the meters are good and making sure we're establishing good customer service, not only when they call in for billing, but when they experience us in the field. So we want to make sure that we're doing those things timely. In order to give you a really good solid timeframe, I, I'd love to say that, you know, right now, on an average basis, if we were out of the backlog world and things like that, we would have resolution within five days of stuff. But it's tough for me to really give you a concrete number right now. I believe the next time we'd be able to do that at the rate we're going through the backlog, we would probably be able to have a real good solid idea of durations on different types of repairs. Because a repair of an earth will, you know, it takes 10 minutes typically to correct. But if we're changing a meter out, that's obviously going to take a little bit more time. So, but we want to create durations around that and be transparent about what and how long it's going to take us to do something. And we're working through that now and in joint with Latoya's.
Yeah, I think that, that's going to be really important for us. I, I realize, um, you know, sometimes when you get a call, the, the problems can be very different and can sometimes take significantly longer if you've got to do a repair versus a replacement. Um, but, you know, I think it's really important for us to begin to think about how we manage our workload by using that understanding to, to be more strategic in our resource, um, utilization. So, um, and I'm sorry, I, one, one more question. I know, uh, one of the major recommendations out of the report, um, was, uh, for us to look into a, uh, a regional authority. Uh, is DPW looking into that as a way to ensure, um, an equitable distribution of the costs of maintenance in water billing and repairs for the system?
Uh, this is, uh, uh, Jason. Uh, thank you for that question. I might, I think that's something that, uh, that, uh, that's sitting with our city administrator, Christopher Shorter. But that's something that, uh, that they can probably respond to, um, as the outcome of the meeting.
Okay, I look forward to that follow-up. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go back.
Since you've been so patient, you can ask as many questions as you'd like.
Oh, I have a litany, so.
Go ahead.
Uh, my first question, this is to the law department, um, because I hear DPW say that the person has to be a DPW employee. Uh, what advice have we given DPW on ensuring that this person has independence outside of the structure of DPW to ensure that there is no retaliation for decisions they may make or an advocacy that they make on behalf of the public?
That's a great question, Councilman. Um, under the city's disciplinary process, they are not allowed to be disciplined for that kind of retaliatory action. So it's already built into the HR process.
So, um, so Hillary, this is my other question is then who and did we advise them on who this person should report to? Is this the person that reports directly to the director or subdirector? As I think about it with the federal government and the state with ombudsmen, they, they, they report to the, um, leadership of the agency directly.
I, I was not asked a question about leadership reporting, so I haven't given any advice on that.
So my question is to DPW, who will this person report to directly daily in terms of accountability, in terms of um, their workflow, but also their leadership, um, just so that they're not lost in the system?
Where, where's, uh, Councilmember, uh, Torrance, where, where's looking at that? But, uh, it, the individual that will deal with this will definitely be, uh, reporting into our executive team within Public Works.
Perfect. I would just like to add that as a follow-up, Mr. Chair. I just want to know where this person will lie in their org chart, but also the accountability in place to protect that person because with anything that is hot button, it's this, we want to make sure that while we have a advocate there, that the advocate can actually advocate. Uh, my next question is, will DPW have, um, given the transition for your programs, resume late fees or shut off? So I just want to make sure it's clear for the public.
Um, I can, I can speak to that. Director Mitchell can obviously, um, you know, correct me or say anything, but none, none, none of that has been considered at this time.
Thank you. And then if it's not being considered this time, when will you have a decision on it? I just want to make sure that the public knows that if this has been contemplated at all.
I, I don't, I don't have an answer on that. I think that's going to depend on, um, this overall process of rehabbing and revitalizing the, um, billing and, and metering unit. Cause that's going to give us the direction on, on where we move next, I think.
Okay, perfect. And have we thought about how this disbursement to tenants and multifamily units will occur? I know that is something that has been held, holding up the implementation as well.
Um, I will say, uh, Councilman Torrance, that, um, all of our, I, I don't want to characterize it that held it up, but because the systems that we are putting in place for the Water For All Assistance Program um, has to be throughout our billing and processes that everything had to go together. And so I will say that, um, the challenge was how best to get these funds into the tenant's hands. We think we have a vendor who's going to be able to do this with a prepaid card. We think that that process will be um, the easiest because that will allow them to, if they're getting it monthly, get that amount loaded on that card. Um, and they're not standing by the mailbox waiting for a check. Because God bless the post office, their, their, uh, delivery has been kind of spotty. So we don't want people on the verge, uh, and we felt that the prepayable cards would be the most direct. It has worked well in some other assistance programs. And so that was finally, we just had to go through a process to find the best vendor. So now we're nailing the contract.
And then my other question is how will we avoid the unfortunate, um, person possibility of this additional, this credit being seen as additional income, which may cause persons to be disqualified from public services or assistance by income?
For those of you who may not be familiar with this issue, what Councilman Torrance is, um, noting is that for our tenants who would be eligible for Water For All Program, who are behind centralized or master meters, where one meter is servicing multiple units, because they're not our customer and so they don't have a water bill for us to discount. Where actually the, the, the assistance that we're providing those individuals is looked at as income for some federal programs. Um, SNAP and, uh, TAF come to mind. Um, we looked at a lot of different alternatives. Um, but at, at the bottom line is there's just some uh, assistance programs that are very strict about how they look at this kind of money. We looked at, could we give them a grant? No, government can't grant individuals funds through a grant. We looked at going through other processes and we were given some suggested programs that were from around the, um, US and none of them were faced with the issue we're faced is we're actually giving funds to an individual who's not our customer. Um, other cities who have done something similar uh, were able to do so because they also had a, a relationship. They might have the water system and they might have the electric system. And so what they would do is put the discount on the electric bill. Uh, and, uh, but we don't have that relationship here. So we have yet to find a way in which we can avoid that issue for some assistance programs that the applicants may be currently receiving. We have not found a solution yet.
And then here's my question for finance. If there were other, is there a way that we can track if persons who will be eligible for this program had any other connections or payments due to the city that we can, uh, can offset the actual payment? So for instance, there are some persons who may have outstanding parking tickets, may have outstanding, uh, we're like camera tickets. Is there a way that we can use those funds offset? I'm just thinking like holistically, what are other ways that we can avoid, um, collateral issues of just poverty in general in Baltimore City?
Uh, that is an item that, uh, finance can coordinate with, uh, be set on because that would require, uh, coordination of many different separate, uh, business systems. You know, so in, in other words, the water billing system does not talk to the parking system. The parking system does not talk to the real property system because all of the systems are individual in nature. Um, so, uh, I can have that be set, but that would require extensive programming.
Thank you, um, so.
Councilman, could I just ask for clarity? Uh, I'm not sure how, you're saying, I'm, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Yeah, let me take a stab at it since I asked.
Okay.
So let's say we're given a hundred dollars to Joe Blow, who's a tenant on that, on the card. But Joe Blow owes two hundred dollars to the city for parking tickets. So the councilman's question was, can we grab that hundred dollars that would have gone on his water for all card to pay the two hundred of delinquent parking tickets that he owes? And my response was, where billing systems don't talk to each other right now or where that would be readily transparent? Does that?
Yeah, I, I, okay. So I guess from our perspective, if we're giving a tenant a hundred dollars for their water bill, we want that to go to the water bill, not parking. Because
And the councilman's question is.
Pulling that funds from, from the utility itself.
That's my question. So it's whether or not, and this goes back to another fundamental question. So this is coming from enterprise funds and not general funds. Because from general funds, then we'll be just, if our systems talk to each other and there was agnostic, agnostic data warehousing, it would just say, hey, there's outstanding bill here. This may be applied to this credit is what I'm getting alluding to. Because this goes back to the coordination of all our city services being in different systems. And even though we've integrated some of them, not all of them are talking to each other, this will be able to deliver. This is one of those things that I have a dream, Henry. You may kill me before you retire. Is that we should have a one-stop shop where you have one account that pays everything in the city of Baltimore, where you can apply to different, you can apply, you can pay your water bill, your tickets, all that in one place, right? Unless you're an external resident. So getting there, it's going to take a long time to get there because of the agnostic data warehousing that we would need and in the, in strategic investment technology wise would be set. So that, well, that's what I was alluding to.
Thank you.
And with that, I yield back to the chair.
Any, uh, anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chair Costello.
I don't see you, but go ahead.
My apologies, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, um, Director Mitchell and Director Raymond, um, I noticed was briefly discussed before regarding water bills that are not going out. Can you talk a little bit more about what's being done to ensure that water bills are going out every month for every property in the city?
So, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Costello. And I, I think, uh, as, as we alluded to, um, uh, earlier on, uh, one of the things that we, we've done and what we're doing here in Public Works where uh, for example, for Baltimore City, we're going cycle by cycle, bucketing cycles to, to collect reads. Uh, once a re, read is collected from a meter, it goes into our UMAX billing system. And that UMAX billing system creates a bill so it can go out to the customers. Should that meter not collect the read for any reason, um, then a bill wouldn't go out or should that read for any reason need to be assessed further as an escalation or exception, then we would, we look at that. And what we're finding out is based upon the accounts that we have in our system and based upon um, uh, the, the, less than one thousand current issues with a meter, whether it's networking or something else, those bills are going out. And so we're seeing, uh, you know, ninety-nine point five percent of our bills going out on time, which is well, well above and within industry standards for any water utility. And so uh, we're, we're, we're able to get that intelligence because um, we're able to get that intelligence because we have the UMAX billing system. We have AMI technology. We know from our meters what's getting billed, what isn't. And so, you know, with that, you know, we are seeing, um, those bills go out and we are seeing our billable revenue associated with that. Um, 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 and we're monitoring that every, every, every day. So I think now the, the question is not, are we, are we sitting out or are they not giving bills? The question for us is, um, um, ensuring that, uh, you know, that, you know, again, the bills are accurate, which we are seeing that and that we are responding to the customer when, uh, they have any concerns. And as Latoya alluded to, she's improving those, um, thing, um, those avenues. And so sometimes and many times within the water, and, and again, I go to my experience, uh, many times it's, it's not so much the, the meter, right? That's the issue, right? Sometimes that to, to, to Ms. Collins' point, you know, it could be a faulty flap and no one knows it and they're asking why their bill went up or uh, the kid left the water hose on in the backyard and that flowed for a week and no one knows why that happened or to cut it off, but doesn't understand that it has a direct correlation to a bill. And so that, those are the things that for us, when we see that and our technology provides that, to be able to provide a quick response to our customers. And some, some cases, and I think was alluded in this, can we provide a, a rapid, you know, professional, quick response? And you know, as we continue to improve that, you, those escalations that goes through council members, your office, through the mayor's office, to my office, right, will decrease. And we're, and we're starting to see that even just within the last, as we, you know, looked a year ago, right, we were responding to phone calls in two or three or three plus minutes. Um, as of, uh, yesterday, we responded to our calls, I think in fifty-eight seconds. So we're looking at that every single day. We had forty-eight abandoned calls. We're looking at that every day. And so to Latoya's point is when they call, can we pick up and can be responsive and helpful? And that's where our process is, where we're trying to tighten up so that, you know, you don't get the call because Public Works is not being responsive, right? And so that's, that's our focus. And we're doing things such as a Jitbit software. Um, we MyTell reports that we look at every day. That gives us the data that we just discussed. Um, we're now looking at a customer service survey so that we can make sure when someone hangs up that they get, uh, you know, one, two, three, four, five stars so that we can see who's getting good service and who's not, who's getting responsible service or not. And that's where we're bringing this utility up to, uh, best practices. And, and that's the work that we're excited about and that you heard today. So I, I, I think we're doing a great job at getting these bills out and, um, you know, a lot of some of the issues are older issues that this utility will have to still yet work through over the months to come. But as we're going forward, we're seeing huge gray strides and the work that, that's being done out there in the field.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Do we have a, so you mentioned ninety-nine point five percent? So do we have a estimated number of bills that aren't going out? I'm guessing that's probably like eleven hundred or twelve hundred?
So we, we look, say, for example, in Baltimore City, we look at it cycle by cycle. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think for say, it's a cycle eight, right, which, which closed just recently. We had about eight or nine bills that didn't go out and it was because uh, some larger issue at the meter that's going to take a significant amount of time to triage. It's not simple, just go in there, open the meter. It's, it's a Matt's point. It's going to take a lot of coordination and construction to deal with. So we're seeing every month, cycle by cycle, that we're fixing those issues and the number of those outstanding continuous complaints are going down. And that's the excitement about it. Uh, now we started at one point now with triaging going. There will always be issues with our meters and the infrastructure. The question is how fast can we respond? Um, how best can we coordinate with the, the public and our customers? And when they call, how best can we respond? And that's the focus of utilities. Because Stephen, the meter shop, I think is doing an excellent job at looking those cycles and fixing those issues. Um, and, and, and we're seeing significant, um, uh, decreases and, and, and outstanding complaints at the meter itself. But we are hearing, and I, I don't want to just say everything is okay. We are hearing some complaints um, that, uh, you know, we haven't been responsive. And that's why Latoya has brought in her customer service back to Able Woman. That's the reason why we opened the floor, first floor of Walkin Center. That's the reason why I think next week, our, our, um, our, 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 our group that deals with emails and, 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 and things of that nature are coming back to the office so that we can continue to train and work on process improvements.
That's very helpful. I guess let me ask a question one, one different way. I think it's my fault for not asking it the right way the first time. The periodically from time to time, we get inquiry about someone who's not received a water bill for an extended period of time, let's say more than three or four months. Do we, the process that you described and kind of syncing up those two lists, does that address that and start to chip away at that quote unquote backlog, if you will, of properties that had not been receiving a bill for an extended period of time? And I caveat that with, I'm not so, I'm not so worried as much about someone who didn't get a bill just this month because you guys are working through an issue, certainly understand and appreciate.
Absolutely. And, and those processes tied to what we call, uh, you know, our, 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 um, reoccurring, you know, uh, locations that we don't receive bills. And we look at that every month, every week so that we can see, our goal is not to uh, um, temporary triage an issue. Our job is a triage permanently. So that not only, um, do they get billed, they, they make sure that they're getting billed on that monthly cycle. And that's the processes in which we're, we're hearing to an improvement, um, as, as we spoke about.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And, uh, thank you to, uh, Ms. Curtis and her team there. Incredibly responsive and, uh, Director Raymond, there's going to be lots of time to thank you for your extensive and excellent career in public service. So I'll save that for another day, but I will be calling you after this hearing on a separate matter. Do appreciate you, sir. Thank you.
All right. Before we move on to.
All right. Before we move on to, uh, public testimony. Uh, Ms. Curtis, do you have, uh, an answer to that question from the beginning of the hearing about how many outstanding?
Yes, I've, I've reported, uh, maybe you weren't on the call, but I can repeat it.
Sure.
There's a total of eighteen sixty six, one thousand eight hundred and sixty six total billing disputes that we have in our system. Twelve hundred and forty six are waiting on action and then six hundred and twenty are actually in process. So someone is actually working the case as we speak.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Uh, Richard, we can, we can go into public testimony if you can go to. Um, just go one by one down the list. We'll ask everybody to keep their remarks to, um, uh, to two minutes, uh, which is standard.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We, we have three people in line who have, uh. Uh, indicated they have questions. First is. Who we have? Mark, uh, Mark Sugarman. Uh, let's see. Uh, Mark Sugarman. Okay, is that not responding? All right. Now, there's several persons who have sent letters, uh, that were forwarded to the members, so.
Just go, just go down, go down the attendees list in order.
First is Edna, uh, Edna Fleming. She won't. Okay. Then these list. Yaslin M.
Did you, did you, uh, did you unmute Ms. Fleming?
I'll try again. I think, let's see.
I didn't see it get unmuted.
Okay. Edna Fleming. Uh, Edna Fleming. Well, she's on twice. Let me try the other one.
Okay. So just make sure you mute this one and open up the other one.
Edna Fleming.
Uh, do you have any testimony for us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ma'am.
Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes. I submitted a letter.
Okay.
Um, I sent it, uh, downloaded it. Get his number, Mr. Stint, please. Oh, um, what, what my concern is, I have a small business. And, um, I looked at my water bill. I saw what I actually use for my water bill. But I see my infrastructure is far exceeds what I use in water. My water bill is over se- is over seven hundred dollars a month. And my water, the usage is only eighteen dollars a month. And I can't understand this. And this is every month I'm being charged seven hundred dollars.
Right. Um, so, you, you know, we're not, we're not gonna, we can't respond to each individual or water dis- uh, billing dispute now. But have you, have you sent the issue over to your councilperson?
What'd you say, sir?
Have you, have you sent this issue over to your councilperson?
I, you know what, sir, uh, Mr. Yeti, I have been fighting DPW since two thousand and ten. What happened was they forgot to bill me. They was, y'all were converting your system from every three months to once a month. I never got billed and I kept saying, where's my water bill? Where's my water bill? Until my bill augmented to over six, seven thousand dollars. I had to go through the law department to set up a payment plan. To resolve the issue without incurring any interest as I paid the payment plan. I have been.
You have, you have an, you have an ongoing.
They tell me my bill is so high is because I have a two inch meter that was put on this property. Prior to me even moving to this property. Now, when I first acquired this property in two thousand and four, I had no problem with my water bill. Now, all of a sudden, uh, y'all changed the law. And instead of assessing my bill based on, um, the water itself, because the water, you can see I'm not using a lot of water. They changed the law to say, oh, now, Ms. Fleming, we're going to assess the bill on your water meter.
Right. So Ms. Fleming, we.
A two inch water meter.
Right.
Instead of your actual water usage.
Yeah, Ms. Fleming, we're, we can't. No, no, we, we can hear you, but I'm just going to tell you, we, we can't go into individual, uh, issues on, on this call. I'm happy to ask, um, ask somebody from DPW, uh, to contact you about your individual, uh, request. Uh, one of the things that I'm sure that they will, uh, they will inform you on is your, uh, ability to get a, a meter reduction. Um, if you're not using, if you're not consuming a lot of water and there's a capacity. Ability to reduce the size of the meter to reduce that cost. I'm sure they'd be happy to walk you through that process. So Marsha, can you just give us an email address that, that anybody on this call that has a personal issue that, um, that you guys will be able to contact within one business day?
Well, it can be sent to the DPW address or you can, you can just forward the letter that, um. Ms. Edna Fleming wrote right to me and we'll make sure it gets responded to.
I, I can do that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Very, very good. Thank you so much.
And, and.
Ms. Ms. Fleming, we, we expect that once that's sent over to DPW, that somebody will contact you within a one business day.
And, and.
Okay, but Mr. Yeti.
Could I ask, is, is your contact information on that letter?
Or a, actual consumption?
Man, I mean, man, there's, 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 there's two, there's multiple different components to your water bill. I mean, some of it is based on consumption and some of them, some of it is based on the infrastructure charge. But I'm, I'm asking DPW, they will follow up with you directly in the next day. If they don't, you can contact me, but, um, they will walk you through how the billing works. Uh, but in the, in the interest of time, you know, we can't, we can't go through.
Okay, sir, I understand. Thank you for hearing my, um, plea.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you very much. Richard, we can move on to the next one if you can.
This, this one is, yeah, Yaslin M. Yaslin M. Go ahead, please.
No testimony.
Thank you. Then we have Sam Halpert. Sam Halpert.
No comment. Thank you.
Rhonda Echol.
Uh, no comment. Thank you.
Rachel, Rachel Rosencheck. Rachel, Rachel Rosencheck.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I, I have had three inappropriate bills from the DPW. The first, the most egregious one was in late two thousand and sixteen or early two thousand and seventeen. We were a household of two, got a water bill of nine hundred dollars when our average bill was sixty dollars a month. We followed the protocol. We did the licensed plumber. We checked everything. And they certified that we did not have any leaks. That's my major problem. It's, you're all talking about when there are leaks. Most people I know have not had any leaks. My husband was dying of pancreatic cancer. He went to the, to you guys, they said. You have to pay it. He went to the ombudsman. The ombudsman wrote a letter and said, you don't have, you know, that they, that we were correct. He went in person to DPW and DPW wrote us a letter saying we are allowed to override. The, um, the ombudsman and you have to pay the ninety dollars. In the meantime, I was paying sixty dollars a month. Then my husband died and I paid the nine hundred dollars. The second time was in October twenty twenty, I got a bill for three eighty seven. This time DPW said that I had to put fruit juice in all my toilets and I did that. And I got a plumber. All of this cost, the plumber, again, costing money. We did a lot of paperwork back and forth. Finally, they said that they would give me fifty eight dollars off of three hundred and eighty seven, when my average is sixty. But however, I had to lie and say I had a leak. I had to sign saying I had a leak, even though they agreed with me over the phone. I didn't. And I have to say that for two years or three years, I would not, um, I would not make another complaint. I thought, who knows how big the, the next one could be. So I paid the three hundred and eighty seven dollars. The third incorrect bill was this year when we got a bill for two hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy three cents for the month of July. And it was incorrect because we were in Israel, six thousand miles away. The house was locked. The house was alarmed. There was no one in the house. And it showed for the month of July that there was no usage except one month. When they showed on the daily thing exactly the same amount of usage, like to the gallon for five days. Then it was better all over again. We came back. We didn't change anything. We didn't do anything. Leaks apparently don't just go away. They come up when no one's there and then they go away. And so, and then what did I do about that? I thought, I can, the, the DPW doesn't give a damn about me and I paid the money. So at this point, DPW owes me conservatively one thousand, two hundred dollars. As my story indicates, yes?
Yes, and Mr. Rosencheck, so, you know, I'm sorry this occurred, you know, a- again, we're, we, we can't get into individual.
No, I'm not asking for that. What I'm saying is that as inappropriately as the money, my experience has eroded my faith in Baltimore. I have had, I've been mugged in front of my house. I, my kids had two cars stolen. They had an intruder in their house. And none of that was as traumatic as this instance that they don't listen, they don't care. And they, and no one responds. And that you had this bill for two years. I understand there's a big issue about the water for everybody, but you certainly could have, and have had an ombudsman. In the past, for two years that you didn't hire anyone. Tell them they don't work with the water for everyone. They only work with cases like mine. But that you haven't hired anyone shows the absolute disregard that you have for citizenry in Baltimore.
All right. Thank, thank you for your feedback. I mean, the, the process has changed slightly, but it, it is a work in progress, which is why we're holding this hearing now to get updates on. On that progress. And now, uh, cases can get referred to the Environmental Control Board, whereas in the past. Um, that, that option did not exist. Uh, but in the meantime, if, if there is something you'd like followed up on. Feel free to send it over, uh, to me or to DPW. And again, I will ask that they respond to it within, uh, one business day. Okay. We can go on to the next, uh, the next one, Richard.
Okay, next we have. Rachel Cutler. Rachel Cutler. No responses, sir. Okay, now, Mr. Sh- Mr. Sugarman appears to have reemerged. Mark Sugarman. Hmm, no response.
Richard, please make sure you're muting people after we, uh.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, uh, my apologies. I guess I was on mute. Um, so, uh, I did put all my messages in the chat. There were a few of them. Um, uh, not quite sure I, my whole chat disappeared, so I have to apologize for that. Uh, but one of the things that they talked about was the, um, uh, the rebuilding of the meters. Um, in the, in the system, um, onsite. And the small residential, small residential ones, they take back, they do QA, they make sure that the meters are in order. So how do they guarantee that the work being done for a larger building or in, in industrial, um, meets criteria? Do they do a QA right there in the field? Um, is something being done? How's that double checked, um, much like the residential ones?
Okay, so, uh, nor- normally, uh, the testimony comes directly to the council. Uh, but I will, um, I will ask DPW to respond, uh, to that if there's somebody on who can, who can answer that question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Matt Garbark, Deputy Director. Um, we have inspectors who go onsite and we also make sure that, um. All the work complies with our standards and that everything is working, um, properly. And that consumption or everything else has dropped back to a reasonable level. So we do have inspectors and we do verify that the work has been completed to our, to our requirements.
All right. The other questions I had were, were in the chat. Um, if you have access to that, if you. Be kind enough to review it. And if you can comment on it, that'd be fine if you think it's appropriate. If not, um, I can try to follow up with, uh, DPW later. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard, is anybody else on the list?
Oh, yes. Next is Janice Adamo. Janice Adamo.
No testimony.
Now we have. Jamie Lee. Jamie Lee.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, thank you so much. So I'm Jamie Lee and I'm a law professor at the University of Baltimore. I'm a member of the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition and I've worked on water billing problems since two thousand and fourteen. And I really appreciate this opportunity to emphasize that the Water Accountability Equity Act provides. Concrete, comprehensive solutions to the problems we're hearing today. It makes water affordable, which brings in revenue that would otherwise be lost because many more people can afford to pay. And the W A E A also sets up fair due process for water billing errors. It sets up transparent oversight and problem solving structures to stop the same problems from happening again year after year. And it appoints a full-time customer advocate to improve fairness to customers, to increase transparency. And to rebuild public trust and accountability. So we have all those solutions at hand. And of course, the bad news is that the law was passed nearly two years ago and we've worked collaboratively with the city to extend the deadlines. By a year, but even those deadlines have passed and the public is still waiting. And so our coalition has met several times with DPW and others in recent months. But unfortunately, as discussed earlier, the city remains convinced that the Water for All affordability program can only be implemented in a way. That jeopardizes people's housing and food benefits and the coalition simply can't accept this. And the bill rebate should not push people over their benefit income limits. When the rebate is simply refunding money that a customer does not actually owe in the first place. And we also call for no further delay on all the other parts of the law that could be implemented separately and would greatly improve customers' experiences. So the coalition asks for swift and full implementation of the Water for All affordability program. We ask for robust due process appeal rights that are fully accessible by all members of the public. And for a strong and independent customer advocate to provide that transparency, oversight and vigorous advocacy for fairness to customers. I appreciate your time and attention to these important issues.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Chair, everybody else, uh, appears to be, uh, press of, uh, previously spoken.
Anybody from the press wants to speak, they can speak also.
Oh, oh, well, we have John T V and we have, okay, we have, uh, Fern Chat. Uh, David. Okay, not responding, yeah. Maybe right, that, that's it.
All right.
Coalition is exhausted, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, if that, if that concludes, uh, the testimony, um, we will go into recess, uh, on this. On this bill and we'll, um, you know, decide if there'll be another, another follow-up hearing. In the meantime, we have a couple of requests into DPW, which we hope to receive, um, as soon as possible. So we are now in recess. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Okay, can, can we close, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.